Second, I'd like to call a meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Veal? President? Commissioner Rush? Yes. Vice Chair Mascherini?
President.
Chair Romero?
President. Thank you. We move to the pledges. Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, unbidden, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rush, would you give the salute, please?
I would be happy to. I salute the flag of the state of Mexico as the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. We'll move to the next item, which is approval. Entertained a motion, approve the agenda.
Are we ready, Hanisa? Or no? Okay. Move to approve the agenda?
Better motion by Commissioner Veal. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Miguel Romero. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay, we move now to awards and recognitions. Where's our manager? There he is. Manager, Hadeo. Mr. Hadeo, we're on now. Six awards and recognitions.
This, uh, thank you. Chair, we have this, uh, Michaela Chavez. Michaela is currently working on our senior programs. Office, she started off in the assessors. She went to the human resources department now. She is our financial person in the senior programs. Michaela, would you please come forward? Morning, Michaela.
Good morning.
Uh, we have a years of service certificate and recognition of five years of service to Tass County, presented to Michaela Chavez, March 2019 to March 2024. Tass County Board of Commissioners, Bob Romero, District One, Miguel Romero, Junior, District Two, Darlene Veal, District Three, Angelina Brush, District Four, Ronald Mascherini, District Five. Thank you, Michaela, for your service to Tass County and for always doing a good job for us.
Thank you.
Johnny, where's Norma? Oh. Yeah. Oh, just get your phone ready, so. So, uh, then I can take pictures.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
We have also a certificate for Norma, who's currently our DWI supervisor. Norma has worked up her way through the program and she's been Johnny's right hand over the last few years. And they've always made a good team throughout the years, her and Johnny. And, uh, Norma's been one of these dedicated employees also. So, uh, Norma, we have a years of service certificate and recognition of 15 years of service to Tass County, presented to Norma Romero, March 2009 to March 2024. The Tass County Board of Commissioners, Bob Romero, District One, Miguel Romero, Junior, District Two, Darlene Veal, District Three, Angelina Brush, District Four, Ronald Mascherini, District Five. Thank you for your 15 years of service. Norma, another thing Norma does is she goes to a lot of public events, health fairs. You'll see her and Darlene and Johnny as well, the whole team. But, uh, Norma, for the most part, you'll see her out there in the weekends. All right, thank you, Norma.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
That's all? Okay.
Round two.
And she wasn't able to make it, but we do have a years of service certificate for Georgia Sanchez. She's been five years of Tass County from March 2019 to March 24. I'm not sure Georgia might actually be the employee that drives the furthest to work. So she lives in Corstia. Yeah, so she probably is. We've had employees that have lived in Mora, but we don't have currently anybody that's from Mora now. But yeah, Georgia's probably drives the farthest and she has good customer service skills as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hadeo, and we appreciate the service of our employees. So thank you again. We'll move to public comments on the agenda. This isn't...
New hires.
Uh, we're on.
No. Okay.
Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. Daniela Marquez here to present to you the new hires for the month of March. First off, we have Feliz Vazquez, Communication Specialist Trainee. Silas Gramalia, Firefighter EMT. Angela Gomez, ADC Officer. Michael Skels, Firefighter EMT. Pedro Cruz Solorio, Firefighter EMT. And Taylor McLellan, Firefighter EMT. Please help us welcome them to the Tass County team.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we move to public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak for three minutes on any topic to the commission, to the public. Anyone in the room would like to, would you like to speak for three minutes? Go ahead, come forward. Please state your name and where you reside.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Romero. My name's Abraham Levin. I'm originally from Tass on Lama Mountain, but now I live in town near, in El Prado on Chavez Lane. And I wanted to come and speak with you guys today about the future of Tass. I know we've been having a lot of meetings with the city and surveys, the Tass County survey, the tourism board's survey, about how we're going to do the future. And really appreciate your work here and I want to thank God for the building and our beautiful days and you guys and may God bless you because it's about the spirit and about our future. And I'm concerned about the development, potential development, especially in the sagebrush country. I got the sage on my mind these days. And when I was a kid, I sort of thought all that land was the Pueblo and BLM land out on the gorge, which is graces our, you know, our symbol of Tass County. Everything on our tourism brochures has to do with this beautiful picture of the gorge and the vistas and the beauty of our land, really, essentially, from all the way to Pilar, up to Colorado and across. And as we plan for the future, we really hope we consider and respect the land and take care of it. And so that any develops, developments that we make should be in keeping with that beauty and the spirit of the land in order to keep our culture strong and the character of Tass as it is, empowering and beautiful, that same feeling that I have every time I see the vista of this magnificent place. And I'm sure you all have that same feeling. We don't want to lose that in 50 years for our children. So I just implore you to remember that in your decision-making about the future. And I know it may seem like people don't care, but people do care. And as I've been out on the ground, I've been collecting, I made this very simple petition and a letter that I sent you all yesterday. And everybody seems to be very receptive to it. And many people haven't had the chance to complete the surveys or not involved with the, um, the politics of Tass as much as I wish they would be. And so I just want to try and help lend a voice to that in our concern for the future. So you guys know that we do really care about the land and we really care about the vistas. And I mean, really, like eight or 10 people are like, yeah, that's great, you know, eight out of 10. Yeah, we really want to protect the land. It's primary. Now, there are people that don't want to involve in politics, that don't believe in, um, social service or civic service or such, but most people are really interested and they don't have the time. But my three minutes comes to a close and I just want to thank you guys again for your service and your good work here. And I'll be around, I'm trying to collect more petition signatures to try and get a good voice for the people that let us know that we really want to take care of the land and the developments we make should be in keeping with that. And you guys are empowered to do that and we're behind you and support you in that. So I want to thank you again and may God bless you and bless us all as the future comes upon us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Anyone else? Would anyone else like to take three minutes to speak to the commission? If not, we'll move on to the minutes. Approval of the March 19th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Commissioners, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the March 19th, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brush.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascherini. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you. Move to nine presentations. Mr. Hadeo.
Um, Chair Romero asked that we table this until our auditor arrives. He did text. He did hit some heavy traffic and he said he would be here around 9:25. My suggestion to you and the rest of the commission is go on to the resolutions section of the agenda and by that time he should be here.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to table until we, until the auditor gets here?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brush?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Veal. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And we are at 10 resolutions and ordinances. A discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2024-13, Resolution Authorizing New Guidelines for the County Lodger's Tax Grant Program, which outlines how applications are to be received, reviewed, and funded for the use of promotional lodgers' tax funds by community organizations and businesses. Jessica Sterns, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Romero Commissioners. Nice to see you here. I'm coming before you, two weeks after, excuse me, I first brought the draft guidelines to you to hopefully have your approval on the new guidelines so that we can open up a new grant making cycle of the lodger's tax promotional funds. I'm not going to go through the guidelines since I know that we went through them last time, but I stand for any questions that you might have. It did incorporate edits. The advisory board went through with a fine-tooth comb and made some grammatical changes, spelling changes, and added a few clarifying points. But you all have had the final version of those. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, question. Commissioner Veal?
Uh, yes. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, yeah, I just have a quick question in regard to, um, to, is, I didn't see, I did read it and thank you very much, as I stated the last time, it's very thoughtful and I really love the way it's set out. But is there any mechanism in place, and maybe I just missed it, in identifying how well that event went? And I mean, is there a method of measurement?
Some evaluation?
Yes.
Yeah, so in the final reporting that we'll ask for, not only are we going to ask for a budget versus actual to see, you know, what they projected to spend versus what they actually spend on their promotional funds. We'll also ask for things like what were their attendance? We will get the projected attendance from their application, so we'll ask what they actually, what actually happened if it was an event. And then if also they can talk a little bit about what they deem as a success in the application. We'll ask them, what do you think success will look like? And so we'll ask in their final report, which will be due at the end of each fiscal year, what was that success? Did you meet those markers that you were looking for? And then we'll also get some copies of promotional items that maybe if they purchased an ad or if they, um, you know, did a radio spot, some of that language. So we're going to try to hit different things. I think this is a bit of an experiment this year that as we grow this new program, we'll start to see what works in terms of us being able to evaluate the success and what information we need to gather that we're not already.
Thank you. That's great. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
More questions? Uh, I just had the one on the reimbursement process. They don't get the funds upfront once they are awarded the funds and they, they go through a reimbursement process. How does that work for the applicants and grantees?
Sure. So, um, the process is such that in addition to that budget versus actual, they need to submit an invoice, a receipt, and a proof of payment for each expense that they would like to be reimbursed for. So we need to see all sides of the transaction. And I'm working very closely with finance to make sure that everything is correct down to the cent because that can be part of the audit. But yes, they do have to, they do have to submit invoice, receipt, and then the proof of that payment. And that can be in the form of a check or a credit card receipt, the copy of a canceled check.
Okay. And the deadline for application?
So for this spring cycle, the deadline, I'm hoping that the period will be April 22nd through May 15th. So it'll be about three and a half weeks for folks to apply and I'm going to be promoting the opportunity widely throughout the community. And then there will be a second application period in the fall. And that's so that it will still be for grants within this fiscal year. But if folks didn't hear about it this first time or they have events that will be in the spring or summer, then they can apply in the fall for that, that time period.
Okay. Commissioner Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Jessica. This is exciting stuff. But the chair's question about the reimbursement process brought to mind a question. Did you think about or take into consideration that some of the applicants, it might be hard for them to pay upfront? And what, I'm not sure what we can do about that, but you know, I can imagine that plenty of our potential applicants would, it would be hard for them to pay $10,000 or $5,000 for something first and then come back and get it reimbursed.
Um, my personal feelings aside on that, I think we are bound by statute and by anti-donation of what we can provide upfront and what we can't, which is that we cannot provide funds upfront to private organizations. The nice thing about this is that in spite of that, that it being a reimbursement process, folks can, in these new guidelines, they can apply quarterly, not apply, they can submit reimbursement for reimbursements quarterly, so they don't need to wait until the end of the fiscal year to be reimbursed for the full amount of their grant. They can be reimbursed for a small part of that each quarter so that they can have a little bit more cash flow.
Okay.
Trying to make it a little easier within the constraints of the anti-donation.
I appreciate the clarification regarding state law.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion to approve a Resolution Number 2024-13, a Resolution Authorizing New Guidelines for the County Lodger's Tax Grant Program.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascherini. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. We move to 10B, discussion, consideration, and thank you, Jessica. We move to 10B, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2024-14, a resolution appointing the DWI Planning Council, Mr. Johnny Rodella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission. Good to see you. Good morning. I'm here today just to discuss a couple of things. One, our council, we have Mr. Tencio, who's our chair, is retiring. So somebody stepped in, Mr. Ronald Montes stepped in, so that's one of the changes that we have. Also, Ms. Cassandra Romero, who was our vice chair, used to work for Rocky Mountain Youth, but now she went to other things, so she doesn't really have the time. So Ms. Michelle Rowe from Rocky Mountain would like to step in as vice chair. These are recommendations for, that the council put together for you. And we just wanted to know if we can get those changes, uh, okay by you. Mr. Jerry Holgriff will step in as the sheriff for a voting member as Mr. Tencio steps out. But the chair, like I said, will be Mr. Ronald Montes, a chief of police from Cuesta. Our last change on our voting members is Ms. Victoria Romo, and she will be the 11th voting member onto our council. And that's part of the first resolution that I'm explaining today. Is there any questions on that? Basically some changes. That's all it is.
Mr. Chair, I've moved to approve Resolution Number 2024-14, appointing the DWI Planning Council as presented by Mr. Rodella.
Motion by Commissioner Rush?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Mascherini. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And we move on?
Next.
Thank you, and we move on to C, which is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2024-15, a resolution amending and approving the DWI teen court planning council bylaws. Mr. Rodella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This one is on letter C of our old bylaws. It basically says the council consists of 10 voting members and two non-voting members. We want to change that to 11 voting members. And that's the name that I asked for Ms. Victoria Romo to come to our program. That would also help us out with making quorum because there's sometimes where officers are busy or things are happening. So we could still have only six to make a quorum, but we have that extra person to be there on the seat. And that's the only change I'm requesting for at this time. Any questions on that?
There are no questions. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-15, a resolution amending and approving the DWI teen court planning council bylaws.
We have a motion by Commissioner Veal. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Miguel Romero. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I leave, I'd like to personally thank Ms. Norma Jean Romero for her service with me. Not only the service and hard work she puts into it, but dealing with me for 15 years, so. Also, also, just to let the commission know, between Norma, myself, and Darlene, we have over 60 years of service with the county. And I'd like to let that be known.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. If I can be excused, commission?
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodella.
Thank you.
We move to 10D, discussion, consideration, decision regarding approval of Resolution Number 2024-16, a resolution authorizing disposal, disposal of personal property for intergovernmental transfer of vehicle to DeBaca County from Sheriff's Office, fleet, Steve Mehta, County Sheriff, and Ms. Els Silva Hill. Go ahead.
Good morning, Chair, Commission. Before you end the packet, you have a letter with a request for donation for a patrol vehicle from DeBaca County as well as information regarding the market value of this particular vehicle because it exceeds $5,000 and based on the statute of 13-6.2, anything over $5,000 has to get a resolution, has to be blessed, of course, and approved by the commission. And then at that point, I also have to say to the state auditor and DFA to get full permission to do the intergovernmental transfer to DeBaca County because it does exceed the $5,000 mark. So at this time, I stand for any questions, as well as Sheriff Mehta is here as well. If the commission have any questions they wish to ask in regards to this resolution.
Any questions, Commissioners, on this matter? I see no questions? Did you have?
Oh, I think there's.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I do have a quick question. Certainly, um, I guess my only question is, obviously, we can afford to spare one of these vehicles. So I know we wouldn't give it up unless we, we had others. So I guess I just, for the record, this is something that we can afford to do in regards to giving up one of our vehicles?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, DeBaca County put out a request statewide to all the counties. As you know, DeBaca County is an economically struggling county, someplace that we found ourselves about 15 years ago. So they put out the call. As such, we have a vehicle that is specifically set up for a K-9 unit. And as our K-9 is retired, and I do not foresee us going down that path this year, you know, this vehicle is at end of service life. So it's our, it's not something that we would use in the future anyways. And because it's got the specialty equipment, the cage in the back for a K-9, and it's set up specifically for a K-9, this would fit their bill. And I think this would also work well to, as an investment into a relationship with DeBaca County. Tass County in and of itself already has an excellent reputation throughout the state for being there for the other counties and helping out. But I think this would bode well for an excellent relationship between Tass County and DeBaca County.
Great. Thank you for that explanation.
Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Miguel Romero?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miguel to approve, um, 10E. This is, uh, this is a resolution authorizing disposal of personal property for intergovernmental transfer of vehicle, vehicle to DeBaca County for, from the sheriff's office. So if there are no further questions or discussion, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you also. Commissioners, thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
We move to 10, 10E, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2024-17, a resolution approving a sponsorship for a transportation project fund application for Blueberry Hill Road improvements. Mr. Joe Fernandez?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
It is an exciting time. We are getting close on starting the Blueberry Hill project. So I'm here to, have you take a look at everything and see if you have any questions for me as far as the, uh, the application that was supplied.
So clarification, you're starting part of it, but this particular one is for an application for grant, is that correct?
That's correct. This is the resolution that's needed for the transportation project fund. And we submitted it probably around March 15th, 18th. It was around the 18th and this one was due. So that was been supplied and hopefully it'll, it'll go good.
Other questions for Mr. Fernandez?
Yes, I do have a question. So thank you for that clarification. So we should be hearing back whether we get the grant, but this is a requirement to, that needs to be in place in order to be able to accept if in fact we are successful. Is that correct?
That's correct. We are, uh, we do have to make a oral presentation before the regional transportation planning organization that's generally on the first Wednesday of the month. We'll do our oral presentation along with the other eight entities that submitted. Like I mentioned previously, there's $7 million in the pot for our region. And so we have to go and get ranked. So the peers around the table will rank the presentation that we will do. And then they'll come up with a funding list. And then that funding list will be submitted to the Department of Transportation. District Five will review it and make their recommendations back. So we wouldn't really know until probably June or, uh, May, June, or probably June or July, they will know we are awarded funding. This is for phase two funding. When Joe started the presentation earlier, he said, getting ready to pave, uh, Blueberry Hill Road monies. And that's for phase one. So that's what the commission approved last fall contract with GM Emulsions. Both Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Silva have been in communications with GM Emulsions to get going in May for the funding that we already do have in place.
Great. Understand. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Thank you very well.
So yes, we are well on our way. Thank you. So, yes, we are well on our way. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so, so we essentially are trying to complete that project by doing it in phases.
Right, because there's no way we're going to get $7, $8 million for a mill and overlay project in one swoop. We have approximately 1.1 million in grant funds that we've already accumulated. Those have some deadlines. We're going to get through this first phase. If we are awarded monies for Phase Two, and the grant agreement comes early, like August, September, we'll try to get another phase in, if the contractor can get it in.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Chair?
This is Commissioner Brush.
Thank you, Chair Romero, and thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Great update. I just wanted to, it's not really a question for either of you, but just a comment. A lot of us heard from the NMDOT last week that construction on Paseo through the heart of town will likely be starting in May. Just wanted to point out that we could be having two fairly significant construction projects going on on two of our most significant routes through our area. Like I said, not a question, just a comment for awareness for all of us. It's going to be a little bit messy, probably. So I think, I think my request is simply that we all try to show up with a little patience and kindness and just realize these, this is, construction is not pretty, but sometimes it has to happen. And we've been, people have been clamoring for better roads. We're going to get them, but it's going to be not so much fun to get there.
Right. We should be able to finish Phase One within three weeks. That's, that's our goal, because remember, it's just a mill and overlay, so. So it should go fairly quick.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Harameo. And with that said, if there's nothing else, I would like, I would like to move to approve Resolution 2024-17, approving a sponsorship for a transportation project fund application for Blueberry Hill Road improvements.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brush?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascherinius. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinius?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Our auditor still hasn't arrived, so the next item is also for the auditor. It is a requirement to Department of Finance Administration that we approve this resolution. I would suggest to the commission that we table this again, and then we continue on with the agenda.
So we need to table 10F until the auditor comes and presents?
I will make motion to table until the auditor.
And I will second that. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinius?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. We move to 11A, Contracts, Discussions, MOUs and Bids. This A is Discussion, Consideration, Decision Regarding the Approval of a Property Lease Agreement Between Taos County and the Town of Taos. Commissioner Harameo, you want to?
Thank you, Chair. You did receive the lease in your packet. Mr. Trahill presented, worked on the lease. I did present it, the copy that is in front of you, that was presented to the town manager last week, who then ordered him. He did pass it on to his attorneys. They had no changes to what Mr. Trahill came up with. Any questions on the lease, I would defer to Mr. Trahill.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Of course, we did have a meeting with the Town of Taos last week, Thursday.
Yeah, two weeks.
Week before that.
Two weeks on Thursday.
Week and a half ago. And what has been discussed, we, we obviously have the draft of the agreement in our hands, and it's been discussed, and we have further discussion, Commissioner Vehil?
Yes. So my only request to change, a change in this lease agreement would be the term of lease. It calls for a 50-year. I, I think 30 is more reasonable, although I do recognize there is a term. 6.2 allows, it's called a term for convenience. So that allows us to, to end the contract. But I still think 30 years seems more reasonable. That is what we use, that's the same amount of years that we have on the hospital. It works. 50 seems like quite a bit of time. And so I, that is my recommendation. We change to, we, I recommend a 30-year versus a 50.
Okay. Any further discussion? Of course, what is in agreement currently, of course, Mr. Trahill is 50, 50. Could you give us a little bit more elaboration on that?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Yeah, the, the town put the 50-year term in the original lease. We did not modify that because of the provision that was delivered to by Commissioner Vehil, which allows either party to terminate for convenience with 364 days' notice. So in essence, this is a year-to-year lease in that the county commission or the town council could decide that they could end it with that notice, utilizing that provision. In my mind, I haven't worked on, I've been doing this a while. I haven't had any lease that went unamended or unmodified for, for 30 years, or 20 years, or 10 years. I'm, I'm going to assume that this is going to be a, a document that, as we learn to live with each other, is going to be modified anyway. That modification could, could include the term if we want to, if there is one in the future. But I don't think that, given paragraph 6.2, that the county is locked into this thing for 50 years. It's really locked into it for a year. And for that reason, we didn't change the 50-year term. We left it as, as written.
So, so the one-year termination for convenience leaves the possibility for either party to terminate it if they so wish?
Yes, and I think that's important, because there are five members on this commission. In two years, it may be a different commission. In 10 years, it will be a different commission, most likely. So each, each one of those commissions in and of itself, I think, will have the opportunity to start over, to amend, to terminate because of paragraph 6.2. Having said that, I mean, the, the years, 30, or 50, or 20, or 10, I don't think matters as much, and for that reason, I mean, you could change it. The only, the only issue with that is that was an originally proposed term by the town. And when we sent over our last draft, we hadn't amended it, and that's the one that the, the manager is, is forwarding to, to his council.
Discussion. Could, could you elaborate a little bit more on other parts of it? For example, the consideration that is given?
Yes, sir. Well, the consideration, it's, it's an interesting dilemma in that the lease is going to be, a lease where the tenant is responsible for maintenance of the facility, including snow removal and that sort of thing. Those are probably, that's a huge expense to the county that we wouldn't have, that we're not going to have to pay, because the leasing, the tenant is going to be paying for those, those costs, and other maintenance costs. It is those costs that they're going to be observing, absorbing, that is the consideration for the county over the term of this lease. The original lease was written by the town to have a $1 consideration per year. I mean, that's, that sort of lease has really been frowned upon by the Board of Finance, which this will have to be approved by the Board of Finance, in that it isn't, it isn't realistic to think that any piece of property could be leased for a dollar a year. So rather than say that, we put with the real consideration, which is the maintenance and upkeep of the plaza. That's the consideration flowing from, from the town to us. We were in the process of having to hire someone or hire staff to do that maintenance on the plaza. When it was determined that we own the plaza, this will allow us to not have to incur that expense. In terms of other provisions of the, of the lease, there is a provision, as I stated, that says that the State Board of Finance is going to need to approve this. So there's three steps to this. Both, both entities will approve, that those first two steps, and then the, the State Board of Finance will have to approve it. If you have any other specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes, just some clarification. I think it's pretty clear here, but maybe for the public's sake, as well as mine. 5.2 talks about alterations and improvements, and it says the town may make alterations under improvements to the premises as are reasonable for the use of the property, only with prior written permission from the county. We all know that the trees are, is a very contentious topic, and I'm not in any way saying yea or nay to, to those trees. I don't know enough to, to, to discuss that now, but that would be one of the examples of what, if they were wanting to remove trees, they would come forward to discuss with the county or in written form. Is that correct?
One moment. I'm not sure if Brett's going to answer this or not. Am I answering this question or you? Well, you got up and left. Well, when you talk about, you're, you're talking specifically about paragraph 5.2, and it says the town may make such alterations and improvements to the premises as are reasonable for the use of the property, only with the prior written permission of the county. Now, whether or not that includes tree removal?
Well, it's altering, right, in some form or fashion? I mean, it's changing the.
In my mind, I'll tell you what, what I, what that meant to me.
Okay, please.
In my, in my mind, that meant man-made structures. It didn't necessarily mean landscaping. I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure that it's broad enough to include trees, bushes, shrubs, grass, to any, to any real extent. But those, those sorts of things are things that would probably have been discussed between the two administrations. I haven't had any discussions with the attorney with regard to that.
And I think that's important, Commissioners, because, I mean, certainly, that's a change, right? A major change. I'm, I'm just, I'd certainly love to hear what you all have to say.
Well, trees are definitely on a lot of people's minds, and they want to really consider that. But, but I think most, most of it would be general everyday maintenance regarding landscape. But if it was something major, like the Veterans Memorial, then I think that would be, that would apply where they would need to get written consent.
That would certainly include it. So for instance, you have trees out there. If you wanted to trim the trees, do you need to have approval first? If you have a dead tree, do you need to have an approval before you remove it? I, I think that's probably beyond the pale. But again, that, that is probably, I'm hoping, has been discussed between the two administrations, or will be.
That has not been, trees have never been discussed. Discussions have been around the Main Street Grant, implementing that within the plaza, and some of you have had the opportunity to speak with Charles Whitson from
Right.
Main Street, and, and my understanding from the manager that the, their only desire is to go forward with the plans by Main Street.
Right. It is my hope, if I may, Chair, that we're going to be talking about these things that are, that are going to be happening on the plaza, and certainly that the public's invited, and their input is important. But in regards to also the statue, I mean, we, you know, I don't know how other folks feel, but that's another potential removal down the line, could be. And, and what we need to make sure is that we protect.
I think the statue would be included under that, that.
But trees aren't. You don't believe trees are.
Written approval would be needed. Commissioner Romero?
On here, let me say, written approval.
I think, depending on the situation, it, it would be through the managers. Certainly, as long as I'm employed at the county, my, I would not allow any alterations to the, the Veterans Memorial, the Father Martinez statutes. I think those are non-starters for us. The discussion of taking down that little building on the corner next to the Veterans Memorial, I know that's within their plans. That may or may not would cause me to come back to the commission and say, hey, this is what the, the town would like to remove that building. Is there any objections? But I think installing benches or that, I mean, between the managers and between their staff, they can install benches without coming back to us, unless, unless they want to do something that changes the character.
Can I ask you about that?
Sorry.
Right. So both of us are going to have it insured. Right. And we've, right, and we've done that. And we've done that in other instances where myself and Mr. Silva has had to take immediate action for something else, and then we've informed the commission afterwards. Yeah.
Okay. On, on the number of years, either 30 or 50 years is a long time.
I'm not giving around.
Most of us would either be around to see. But I, I, my sense is that the county will want to remain somewhat engaged. And so I think we'll be reviewing or, 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 or the issue is not going to go away totally, but by putting in place this contract, I think we'll remain engaged. With that, Commissioner Vehil, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the, excuse me, the lease agreement with the Town of Taos regarding the plaza. I will make a motion to change from 50 to 30. That's my motion.
Okay. The motion is on the floor to approve the, the lease agreement, the agreement regarding the approval of property lease agreement between Taos County and Town of Taos, with the one change of changing the 50 years to the 30. Is there a second? I will, I will second that. Madam Clerk, if, if there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
No.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinius?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, just, on that note, just know that the Town of Taos may reject that, so.
And, and may I ask a question? And if they reject, certainly it comes back and for further discussion, right? It's, that's kind of the, or how does that work?
Well, I mean, strictly in contract law, there's an offer and acceptance. And then the rejection of an offer is basically the end of it, unless somebody makes a counteroffer. So it's, it's likely, but, but certainly not assured it would come back.
Right. And then if, in fact, it, it does not matter, that number does not matter, it should not matter. I mean, seriously, 30, 50, I guess, we could have left it 50. But once again, if it doesn't matter, then why should 30 matter to them versus 50?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trahill. Okay, we move on, and we move back, I guess. We do have our auditor in the room. And so, Mr. Harameo, I'll go back to presentations.
Before, even before that, probably make, suggest to the commission that you make a motion and, and vote on coming back to presentation, since we tabled that item.
Okay. Entertained a motion to move back to item nine, presentations. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we return to item 9A, a presentation of the Taos County Financial Audit Report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023.
Okay. The motion by Commissioner Brush?
I'll second that.
Wish my Commissioner Mascherinius, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes.
This is our auditor. Some of you have met Mr. Bobby Cordova for CPAs. He's run his own firm for probably 10-plus years now, but he has great familiarity with Taos County, Town of Taos, even Questa, with his past employment, so he knows our region well and very familiar with us, and thank you, Bobby, for coming up today. Anisa will have the presentation.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Brent. My name is Bobby Cordova. We've prepared a brief presentation here. There's a requirement in the state of New Mexico that all audits be presented in a public meeting, and so we're satisfying that requirement today. All this information has been discussed in detail in previous meetings or briefings during the audit, so this is just kind of a summation. We had the exit conference and discussed for over an hour the details of this, so this is a condensed presentation. The actual financial statements of Taos County are housed on www.saoan.org. That's the New Mexico Office of the State Auditor's website. So it's an over 160-page document, a lot of information in there, and so I'm just going to touch today on the timeline of the audit, touch on some financial highlights, the communication with the commission that was performed during the audit process. I'm just going to touch on that and then go over the opinions and the reporting. Okay? So as far as timeline, the county's audit is due December 1. So the period that we audited was fiscal year '23, so the period from July 2022 through June 2023. So keeping that December 1, 2023 due date in mind, we kind of worked with management in the summer, you know, so we started planning communications. We know there was challenges in fiscal year '22, and we ended up getting it in on time, but we didn't want to repeat that. So we kind of had some communications in May and June, and we had a lot of back and forth. There was a lot of prep done by your team. So at this time, I just want to thank Emily and Elsa. Emily was new to the process, and then Elsa in the Finance Department. A lot of hard work goes into this, and also Paula and her team in the Treasurers Office for dealing with us and getting the prepared by client items that we asked for during the summer. So over the course of a couple months, we did some planning, preparation, risk assessment, and October 16, we had the entrance conference. We had already finished kind of some of our planning and done some test work remotely before we were here. We were here for about a week, and during that mid-October timeframe, we almost finished our fieldwork. There was some wrap-up items, and we pretty much finished up in October, went into drafting financial statements and findings and that kind of thing. And then on November 30, we had an exit conference. Commissioner Brush and Commissioner Romero were there present. At the exit conference, we visited for about an hour, an hour and 20 minutes, and went over all the details of the audit. So ultimately, the audit was submitted on time. Okay? So the county didn't meet that December 1 deadline. The release and issuance of the financial statements was technically January 22. It goes through review process at the state, and the State Auditor's Office technically has the legal authority to release the financials. So they did that, and January 22, it was a public document. There was also a federal single audit performed, so I'll touch on that here in a little bit, but because of that, there was a federal reporting requirement as well, and that was accepted by the office, by the federal clearinghouse on February 14. So for federal purposes, Taos County was compliant with its audit requirements and responsibilities as well. Okay? So my deliverable for the timeline piece is that for federal and state purposes, the county was timely. Okay? This next couple slides has a look back, just kind of high-level bar graphs on a couple different captions within the financials. We discussed this kind of in more detail at the exit conference, but overall, revenue was higher. So that's the revenue that's earned. FY '23 versus '22 increase was about $12.3 million. A majority of that had to do with the grant income, the ARPA funds and grant income, and then another caption that changed quite a bit was investment income. So FY '22, you know, market was rough, and it turned around, and you guys earned a lot more, about $1.6 million more in FY ' '23. On the expense side, a lot of those expenses or some of those expenses were pertaining to capital, so the expenditure increase didn't translate on a full accrual basis. Okay? So full accrual basis, expenses were off about $3 million, but if you look at your fund statements, which is a different basis of accounting, it was about a $7.5 million increase. So a little more in line with that revenue jump. You did have an increase in cash, as we'll see on the next slide, so whatever you took in, you spent less than that, so it resulted in an increase in your cash balance. So if you took a snapshot at 6:30, 2023, your cash was about cash and investments, just this is all liquid cash and investments, $59.3 million represents about an $8 million increase. So pretty good increase overall in the cash position, mainly in the general fund, ARPA, the grant funds, you know, your non-major special revenue funds, GRTs, you know, those funds increased in FY '23 pretty healthy. And here, general fund, again, pretty good increase there. It seemed like a relatively, you know, pretty good conservative approach there. Okay? A few other highlights. Total debt, that decreased by over $5 million. So you made principal payments versus, you know, if you just look at the change in principal, what was owed, about a $5 million chip away there at debt service. And then if you look at the business type activities, solid waste and ambulance, the operating loss was about $1.1 million in FY '23. Majority of that is the ambulance fund. Okay? So the ambulance fund, about $962, and that's not total change in fund balance. That's just looking at charges for services versus the cost to perform those services for the citizens of Taos County. And then another note, just the pension and OPEB liabilities, you really don't kind of probably talk about that. It's not a budgetary item, except for the contributions on the employer and employee side, but overall, the actuarial study that was performed at the plan levels, your carved-out portion, the county's portion, increased about $5.7 million. Okay? So that's, again, we don't audit that number. We don't audit those plans, and the county, you know, they just, it's provided by Para and retiree healthcare. Okay? So, but that, you know, pretty significant increase there on the liability side. Okay? So that's the financial highlights. This is communications. You know, we kind of had several slides to go over, satisfying the requirements. Audit standards require us to communicate during the exit conference. Manias is the forum. We did that. Just to recap, the audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and generally accepted government auditing standards, and the coin term was reasonable assurance. So we don't test every single transaction, every payroll, every grant. It's done on a test basis. Okay? And then the scope and timing, you know, we touched on that in the early part, the planning, the entrance conference. The scope was a financial audit and then a federal single audit combined under one report. Okay? There was no changes in scope. Our responsibility is to determine whether your accounting policies, the county's, conformed a generally accepted accounting principles gap, and we determine that they do. So if you compare your accounting policies to Rio Riva County or Currie County or any county in the United States of America, they're similar. Okay? So that's the idea behind one set of uniform kind of principles in the United States of America. So yours conformed. Estimates, there are some estimates in your financials, mainly related to the depreciation of, you know, this building, all the vehicles and equipment, so all the capital you expense over the time that those assets serve the citizens of Taos County, and so we determined that those estimates were reasonable. And then also, I mentioned the pension and OPEB. In that actuarial study, again, we don't audit it, that liability is, it's a soft number, I'd say. It's an estimate. So there's assumptions in there about how long people are going to work and live, investment return, that kind of thing. So there's a lot of disclosure in your financials about that. We encountered no significant difficulties and no disagreements during the audit process as it pertains to performing our audit, and, you know, there were no significant misstatements. There was an adjustment of capital assets. I'll touch on that in a little bit. And then no significant exposures. You do have quite a bit of money, at least at 6:30, and I'm sure Paula knows this and addresses, as far as the investment policy risk, about $44.6 million was tied to kind of US government treasuries. Okay? So that's where a lot of the money was. Okay. Next page is the opinion. So the second deliverable we have for you is, this is the opinion we're rendering on your financial statements. The opinion we rendered was an unmodified or clean opinion. There was a significant adjustment to your capital, meaning buildings, equipment, land from the prior year. The county was not able to do all the accounting for that, so we had to qualify the opinion last year in FY '22. So you guys went through the process. Elsa did a nice job and fixed that area. We still had some matters that we noted, but in terms of the number itself, we felt it was materially close, and therefore, we rendered an unmodified opinion. Okay? And that's on pages eight through 10 within that, within your financials on our letterhead, the opinion. Okay. Next opinion is related to the single audit. So that's the procedures that we perform to determine whether the county complied with the coronavirus relief funds. So you received a lot of that money, and that accounted for about 57% of the federal dollars administered, and so our opinion on pages 146 through 148 rendered an unmodified opinion. Okay? So deliverable number two is clean opinion on the financials and also
Okay. Yeah, I think we can proceed anyway. Brent, are you ready?
We're ready.
Entertain a motion to come back into regular session.
Will we come back?
Motion by Commissioner Romero. Is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Mascherinas. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Parabiel.
Yes, before you, you have Resolution 24-18, a resolution for acceptance and approval of fiscal year '23 financial audit. It is a statutory requirement that we approve the audit by resolution, and this copy of the approved resolution will be submitted to Department of Finance and Administration. I stand for any questions on the resolution.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, and that is to approve the resolution for acceptance and approval of FY '23 financial audit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And now we are on 12A, Department Matters. Discussion, consideration, decision regarding approval of a letter of support for the Penasco Valley Historical Preservation Society's grant application for the New Mexico Tourism Event Growth and Sustainability Grant Program. Ms. Jessica Sturrock?
Commissioner Romero, Commissioners, thank you. Just to clarify, are we on 12A for the Destination Forward grant? There are two different grants here. I just wanted to confirm which item.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I got off on that one. That should be, that should be 12A on the grant for the Penasco Valley Historical Preservation.
Great. Thank you so much. I think you all know, we need, as staff, we need your approval to submit letters of support on behalf of the county, and this grant opportunity with New Mexico Tourism's Destination Forward grant is an opportunity for the Penasco Valley Historical Preservation Society to apply to continue their architectural planning and design processes to renovate the historic Prokeal School. I'd like to support their efforts in this grant application. They cannot apply for this grant without a fiscal agent that is a government entity, and so we are their government entity representative. So in this opportunity, we would be acting as their fiscal agent, which is outlined in the letter.
Okay. Questions for Mr.? Is there a motion?
I think this is pretty cool. And so with that, I will, I move that we approve a letter of support to the Penasco Valley Historical Preservation Society.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner O'Meara, second by Commissioner Mascherinas. No further questions. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And we'll just continue with B., which is discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of a letter of support for the Red River Chamber of Commerce application to New Mexico Tourism Department, a Tourism Event Growth and Sustainability Grant Program. Jessica?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This letter is just a straight, simple letter of support. We would not be acting as fiscal agent on behalf of the Red River Chamber of Commerce, but they did reach out to us asking for our support.
Okay. Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Right here.
Motion, Commissioner Romero?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Brush. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item, any Commissioner would like to discuss further?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that we pull item 13C just for a question or follow-up from the consent.
Which one was it?
13C, the budget adjustment to the commission budget to appropriate budget for agenda management software expense. I just have a question or two.
Okay. So we can move forward to approve everything but 12C? Okay. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda, A through N with the exception of, or was that a motion?
To remove the C.
Right.
Right. So I move that, I move that we remove 13C from the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, Commissioner Brush, Commissioner O'Meara to remove, well, it's actually, actually 13C on the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay. Now, I guess we'll entertain motion for approval of other, all others. Commissioner Brush?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda, items A through N, excepting T.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Mascherinas to approve all but 13C. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherinas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on item 13C, approval of budget adjustment to the commission budget to appropriate budget for agenda items, software expenditure for FY '23, '24. Commissioner Brush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. I just have a question about this, because probably, I don't understand. I'm not the person working with the budget, the agenda software, week in and week out, but I just noticed that $24,000 for agenda management software seemed like a big price tag for software, so I'm just wondering if we could get a sense of what we get for that $24,000. I know when we're just looking at this, which Anisa gives us every meeting, it looks like a template, but I don't know what's going on behind it, so I'm just, forgive my curiosity. I'm just interested in what we're getting for $24,000.
I guess, I'll let Renell and Anisa answer this question, because within your devices, you could have the ability to look up on an app, the agenda software, the agenda... the agenda software, the agenda, uh, this also provides the agenda management is when they enter in the agenda items, it gets uploaded to, uh, our website. And I think generally everybody's looking at the website to prepare for the meeting last week or before me and Renell, a discussion of, that everybody's probably going that way and versus the, the app that's on, like on the iPad. And so that's one component of it, but I'll let Renell and Anisa talk about what you guys get out of the agenda software.
I do use the app. It's pretty cool.
Okay, well, the app's a good part of it. The, the process of when you guys get your agenda is that we go through a certain, it's not just a template. Everything has to be uploaded and then it has to be, uh, generated and then it's sent to our, uh, published and it's published to the community and then published to your guys' iPads. But we also have to keep, like, um, when you have executive session and there's materials there, it's kept out of the public's view. Um, there's that process. There's also, um, uh, you know, when you get on, uh, our webpage and you can go back to previous recorded and it kind of cooks that all into it. So this, it's not just an agenda thing, it's the whole, the whole burrito is like wrapped up in all that stuff. So there was an increase in the amount and that's why we had to add the twenty-four thousand. It's not just for the software, it's for the overall use of everything. Um, and Granicus is, we found Granicus and we don't want to lose Granicus because it's like the best that we've had.
No.
So like when you see stuff, it's, we have to download everything into the system and we have to make sure it's attached and there's locks and there's not locks on certain stuff. Um, so that's what it is, but.
That, that makes a lot of sense and that's kind of what, what I was guessing. I, you know, I'm not saying this isn't a good thing. I just wanted to make sure we understand what we're doing and actually then understand what some of the work behind it is that, that you guys are doing. Um, and Anisa, your description, I think, is a good reminder, especially if there's like executive session stuff for, that we should all appear, be using the app, um, rather than just going to the website.
And if you go on the website and you, you see our agenda and you see something that you can click on, that's also taking to the link. So it's like a whole, like, it's not just a template. I wish it was a template.
Planning, if planning commission uses it, in I want to.
Yes. There's, all the commissions, all the boards have access to the agenda software and they all use it.
That's a good reminder to you. Thank you.
I forgot about that part. Yeah.
That's, that's my reminder.
No, not just, yeah. It's a good program. All the boards through the county use it.
That's, okay. And I may add, uh, Chair, is that, um, in Granicus, we can also write our notes as we're reviewing.
Yes.
The agenda we can prepare because it's hard to remember those questions, but as we're going through it, we can type right there and, yeah.
But, yeah, it's, it's, we need, um, a little bit more, like, when we get a new commission, it's, we have to teach you again and then you got to play with it for a while to figure out that, the ins and outs. But it's a good program. For the planning, that I've been a part of the planning and this one, it's easy for us to both use and not have to, like, be, like, I can come down here and know exactly what's going on from her installing it all into me, so.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate, Mr. Chair, I appreciate you entertaining my question. I appreciate you guys entertaining my curiosity, um, and, and also appreciate the glimpse of, like, what actually goes into, before we come here at nine AM on a Tuesday morning. So, thank you. And with that, I move to approve item thirteen C, a budget adjustment to the commission budget to appropriate budget for agenda management software expense for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll second that.
We have motion, Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Mascherini to approve item thirteen C on the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Veale?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Uh, we move to fourteen, I'm fourteen, County Managers Report and Matters. Uh, Mr. Hermio.
Uh, thank you, Chair Romero. I would also like to recognize some other employees for their years of service. Otas County, we have Andrew Montoya at the Detention Center, seventeen years of service. Lenny Quintana, Fire and Rescue, he's at seventeen. Mike Cortovar Chief at fourteen. Anisa Ambidi with thirteen. Uh, we have Gilbert Attentia with nine. Elias Puntoya with nine. Robert Gomez with Fleet with eight. Gilbert and Elias are both the Sheriff's Office. Uh, Mark Cortega with seven years. Leo Martinez with six years. Uh, Fernanda Escobar Lopez with four years, who works up in our solid waste administration. Rick Dominguez in our sister's office, three years. And John Sanchez, uh, one year and, uh, at the senior programs and Destiny Shelburne at, uh, Fire and Rescue with one year and Randy Fish with senior programs at one year also. So, uh, just wanted to take that moment and recognize them for their years of service. I did email the commission, a, um, uh, email last week regarding the mobile training unit in partnership with, uh, the Workforce Integration Network, uh, which is sponsored by North Central Economic Development District, um, and, uh, the Economic Development Department, the Regional Development Corporation as well. So there'll be a mobile unit parked out here in the parking lot from April eighth through April twenty-sixth. This would provide skilled, uh, for the, uh, provide training for the skilled trades and, uh, welding and, uh, those type of, uh, trades. So it'll be out here. You could also be able to get a certification at the time. So they did, uh, approach Jessica about, uh, using a parking lot. To me, it was a no-brainer to get that parked out there. So, uh, they're responsible for the advertisement, but we would also show this on our social media pages beginning next week. And, uh, so April eighth through the twenty-sixth, um, I'll give you what I give the commission is, uh, it provides mobile training for the skilled trades and, uh, offers apprenticeship readiness, state test prep courses, provides special construction project training, brings skilled trade training into, into our community that lacks access to training opportunities, uh, seeks to remedy the shortage of skilled tradespeople locally, regionally, and nationally. Uh, there's, uh, thirteen different trade programs. You can get also OSHA ten certified, nationally recognized certifications for first aid and CPR. And so, uh, you did have this in your email, but I just wanted to point that out during, uh, uh, commission meeting. The other thing, uh, Ms. Stern was asked to be a panelist for the Northern Region Workforce Profes- Professional Development Conference that's occurring next Monday and Tuesday in Santa Fe, the eighth and the ninth. Uh, she will be speaking on the creative economy. So, uh, I'm glad that Jessica's going out there to do that, uh, for us. Uh, Mr. Bobby Lucero, we're working on making plans to do, uh, training on the IES Incident Command, uh, structure, uh, training. So we're going to make sure staff gets trained on it and then we'll have a, a, uh, kind of an exercise for those that are in our EOC, uh, here at the county. So that's going to happen a little bit later on in the summer and we'll make sure everybody is trained in the incident command structure for those players like Satismus, uh, Ralsanelli that are new to the county. But, uh, we need to put her through the training on the finance component of emergency management. There's something we're to break out. So I told Bobby, let's, uh, give Emily some breathing room because she's working on the budget. So after that, we'll, uh, get on, onto the training component of it. Um, speaking of budget, uh, today, tomorrow, Miss Emily's going to be releasing the budget worksheets to each of the departments. And, uh, so those will go out, uh, they're going to be due, uh, April nineteenth. And so we have a short, uh, timeframe that those will be submitted, uh, back to the finance department. Uh, we want to use our April, uh, first meeting and May and our second meeting and May, our first, second meetings to go over the budget with the commission. We're asking the commission to have a keep-up in May twenty-eighth, which is a Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day, uh, to approve the, the interim budget. Emily will submit it by, uh, May thirty-first, so by Friday she needs to submit this. So we'll, we would approve it on the Tuesday. If there's any changes, she can work on that on, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, and really she'll start uploading by, by, uh, Thursday when she's ready to start uploading, uh, that process. And I believe Mr. Veale will be with here, here for that backend process as well. So it's going to be a fast and furious, um, budget season. And, uh, and then they're working on finishing up the quarterly reports. Those will get submitted, uh, and they're making the last of the budget changes. And then we can move forward, uh, with the new budget year and working in on that.
So then May twenty-eighth will be a special meeting?
It'll be a special meeting. There'll still be early voting going on in here. Uh, early voting ends, uh, June first, uh, that, uh, Saturday, I think it's June first. Uh, and so early voting ends at Saturday. So we'd have a short commission meeting in here. And we'll try to limit, uh, the activity in the month of May due to the, um, early voting that'll be taking place in the commission chamber. So it'll be, uh, more, uh, I don't want to call them simple agendas, but more quicker agendas that we're not having a large crowd. Um, so, uh, last month I mentioned that we're working with Carson National Forest on Pickery's repeater site to install a new solar system. The Carson has a grid to this. However, we need to establish a new special use permit. So, uh, Mr. Sadaabu says he'll be working with the Carson and, and getting that special use permit. We're also supplying a letter to Mr. Duran asking for the special use permit. What we're probably going to have to do and enter into another agreement with the Carson is the county will fund the installation of the solar array because it does need to grow up into a land portion. And then the Carson will reimburse us, uh, for their cost share of it. It's just going to be quicker, uh, for us to pay for it and then get reimbursed from the Carson on that. So, uh, that's one of the major things that Roberto is working on. Uh, the month of April is Alcohol Awareness Month, or DWI program. We'll be setting up a table in front of the, the sculpture out here in the front on April eleventh and nineteenth to further bring the awareness, uh, to alcohol, uh, to the alcohol awareness month. Our, uh, uh, our planning department is having two public meetings on the comprehensive, uh, plan. And Rachel's going to talk a little bit about that as I get my voice back.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Hermio. Thank you. Um, so next Monday, April eighth, there is going to be, uh, two public meetings. These will be our first public meetings for the comprehensive plan update. The first meeting is going to be at two-thirty and the second meeting will be at six o'clock. And both meetings will be here in the chambers. Um, I also want to mention that, uh, we've extended the deadline for the survey. So for anybody listening, if you haven't had the opportunity to do the survey, uh, the survey is still available until April fifteenth is when, uh, we have extended it to.
So this meeting is the Planning Commission meeting?
Uh, this is for the comprehensive plan update.
But who's speaking? Is it the Planning Commission or is it the Commissioners speaking?
It's for the public to, to, for the public to solicit the public's input on the comprehensive plan. Like the gentleman that was here, it is a missed opportunity to come in and voice his opinion on our comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rachel. Uh, we're holding at seventeen percent vacancy rate through the end of March. So we have, uh, forty-eight vacant positions. So we, right now we have, uh, there's two hundred and seventy-five positions budgeted for and we have forty-eight, uh, vacant positions for seventeen percent vacancy rate. I'll email you out that report, uh, after the meeting. Um, Anisa will be working with, uh, both the farmers market group and the flea market group as to the use of the parking lot. They still have to obtain approval from the town of Taus, but, uh, uh, we'll be, they'll be coming back, both the farmers market and the flea market. Uh, there's also, uh, a car show that they're asking us, uh, that will take place. The weekend of fiestas as well. So we still need to work out some details there. Um, the National Association of Counties, NICO, has appointed me to serve on the Community Economic Workforce Development Steering Committee. So I got that letter today. Uh, both Commissioners Brush and Veale currently serve on two other, uh, steering committees, public lands and, forget yours.
Energy, Environment, and Land Use.
Energy, Environment, and Land Use. And Commissioner Veale's on the public lands, uh, component. I just mentioned you, sir. No, I was just, uh, saying that, uh, that there's a public meeting on Monday and, uh, citizens like yourself can attend that meeting to give us the input on the comprehensive plan.
Thank you very much, sir.
And then the other item that I wanted to bring up with the commission, and I tried bringing this up, uh, last fall, uh, into the winter, prior, uh, to us, uh, going into the new calendar year, is letters of support. If we can maybe change that system of letters of support. For example, Dennis Romero from the lead program is applying for a grant, uh, to, uh, the, uh, Behavioral Services Division and would like a letter of support. And sometimes some of these don't timeout, uh, for the commission meetings. I would ask the commission for their discretion on allowing staff to, uh, either sign these and where necessary, get the, uh, commission on there as well. And if that item that Jessica presented earlier, that could have been just, uh, an item that we just mentioned in my report versus the commission voting on it. So I would ask that we consider revisiting that policy as well. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Commissioner Brush?
Thank you, Mr. Romero. And I'm not sure if the letter of support thing is actually a policy, but personally I wouldn't mind just being informed about it because the timing for people in our community is, is tricky to like match up with, with one of our meetings. And I think that we have enough trust in our staff, our leaders to say, please, just let us know after you sign it.
Yes, I would add, because TK one was one that, uh, you know, was in need of our support and the timing was not there. We did have to individually have to do something different. But, um, I, I, our staff knows what we stand for and, and so I, I trust as well.
That's exactly what I, I mean, Stern, Mr. Stern were talking about, that, that you guys, you guys know, I know what your non-starters are and.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, could, could I ask a couple more questions?
Yes.
That was actually, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Hermio. Good update today. Um, just a couple of things. The, the mobile training unit that's going to be here starting next Monday is super exciting. Um, and that's one of, a, a great program that North Central New Mexico Economic Development District is doing. I'm wondering if there should be any outreach and I think that maybe we could even help with this to our local high schools and even UNM. I don't know if they've been informed that this is happening. I know that you said it's North Central's job to do the outreach, but it might not hurt for some of us to do outreach to those kind of relevant institutions.
All right, that's what I was thinking. And I wanted to call Mr. Mylet to see how they were doing outreach because I didn't want to step on anybody's toes either.
If you'd like, you know, I'm, I'm on the North Central Board, um, and I'm happy to check with their, this project manager um, to see if they've done that outreach because you're right, we don't want to, we don't want to overreach.
Yeah, because the other issue. Right, because the other issue and is I didn't, the flyer doesn't quite say come over here to the county parking lot either. It was a generalized flyer because this mobile unit will be in other locations throughout the state.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does have Taos, but it really didn't. You have to, you have to know how to scan the QR code and then this QR code takes you to the, to the website. And so it doesn't even specifically say the county.
It's just such an excellent opportunity. Maybe we can, as we're out there, wherever we are in the community, just be mentioning it to people who might be interested. Thank you. The other question I had was about the incident command training and you said everyone will be getting trained. Are we supposed to also, the commission, be trained in that? I don't know, but that was, it was mentioned to me once last wildfire season, which we're rapidly approaching, if not already. And that the commission was supposed to also be trained in that?
I think you and Commissioner Vial have taken classes, maybe you missed it.
Missed it.
And because there's one for elected officials and this is the one that Mark Ortega put out to the rest of, to the rest of the local governments as well. And I think this is when you guys weren't, weren't in office yet, but we did invite you to it. Yeah, right.
Okay, good, then maybe I just need to, I think, speaking of not stepping on toes, it's important to know our roles when something happens, right?
Well, that's something that I can ask Mark and Bobby to do another one because there's a couple new ones throughout the other local governments that we partner with, so.
Okay, thank you very much. It just, it seems, it seems super important to be prepared for emergencies of any kind. My last question, Mr. Chair, is about the solar array. You said that we're going to be funding that upfront. Where, how are we, what are we funding it from?
From dispatch email and on budget. So they have the cash to do that.
And speaking of being prepared, that's a great project to extend coverage for when there is, when emergency calls need to be made. Thank you, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Brush. Any other questions for the county manager? If not, if not, we'll move then to 14B Veteran Cemetery Update, Mr. Richard Sanchez.
Chairman Romero, Commissioners, it's always a pleasure to be here. I'd like to jump back a little bit about the training bus that's coming. It's part of the wind grant. They're actually, it's a paid work program for three weeks for clients that if they do get accepted and they do want to do it. It's virtual welding and plumbing welding. And so they get paid, they get their OSHA training for the three weeks that they're there. They also help try and place them with employers here in Taos and subsidize their wages for, I think, 10 weeks. So I'm hoping we get a good turnout. I hope it benefits the community, but that's, that's part, it's part of the wind grant that, that's throughout the northern New Mexico. Back to the veteran cemetery. Last week weather kind of shut us, shut a bunch of things down concrete wise, both at all our projects because concrete plants weren't running. But we're up and running and as you could see in the pictures I sent you, we were pouring concrete yesterday, trying to play a little bit of catch-up inside. You see the retaining walls are formed there in the overhead video. Building's all wrapped, getting ready for windows and plaster prep. We're going to put another two inches of foam on the exterior so it'll be very thermally efficient and synthetic plaster similar to what we have here at our complex. Overall, the schedule's moving well. Plan on being completed and do a walkthrough late May, first week of June, generate a punch list and have the contractor 100% done and out of there by the end of June. Like I said, things are moving well. Stuff's showing up the way it's supposed to. Workers, weather's been fairly cooperative and will be done by the end of this fiscal year. The one thing, I have been getting lots of questions about when are you going to open it? It's like, that's a policy decision, so I've been referring them all back to you. And so be expecting a lot of questions from the general public. I'm hoping, I would like to do an open house the first of July, first or second of July before, fourth of July weekend. Do it on my own, I'll do it on my own time if need be. But just to have an open house for the public to go by and see the cemetery, the administration building and see that it is 100% complete and ready to go. I said whether we start interning veterans this year, that's a policy decision and that's up to you. But we are moving well and like I said, we will be, we'll be done.
How's the project pave the road on the entrance going?
We've got a quote to pave the road. When I, when we asked for the additional funding, I knew I was going to be a little bit short on some equipment. And I also, in construction projects, you just have to have a little bit of contingency. So we asked for three and a half million dollars, we received three and a half million dollars. We've asked for a million dollars, we received a million dollars. I think we have enough to pave the entire loop. And like I said, there's a little bit of policy and politics going in there also. I'm hoping all the paperwork at DFA, they can run it through as fast as they did for our main funding. And the goal is to have it paved by the first of July. So we're going to start a little bit of the prep work. Taos County's staff will do the clearing grub, clear some of the overgrown with our graders to keep costs down and do a little bit of the prep cleanup. And we'll go from there. So we have the money. If they, we can get the paperwork done, we have a contractor lined up, ready to go. But by the end of summer for sure, it'll be paved. I'd like to have it paved by the end of June.
The, the job itself for a contractor shouldn't take more than a week, right? It's all the preliminaries.
A little bit more, a little bit more than a week. It doesn't seem like that big, but it's actually a mile and a quarter, the entire loop. And it'll be 24 feet wide like our standard county roads, two lane. And so there's, it, it's mostly prepped, but it does need a little bit of work. And then the weather has a lot to do with it too. We have to have 45 degree in rising for, for the asphalt. The asphalt plant has to be up and running. We're trying to get it scheduled in because there's so many paving projects going on that if we don't get it scheduled in, we may get bumped or may have to get it from Espanola, which I really don't want to. But time, time and weather are dictating that particular part of the project.
Any questions? Questions? Great, thank you. We'll move to, right, right to the C Historic County Courthouse update.
Commissioners, it's moving, it's moving a little bit slow. Part of the problem with the courthouse is that it's such a tiny little piece of property. It's not like when we did this building or even the veteran cemetery that earthwork guys are coming in here. They did the earthwork here at the administration building. They moved over to the courthouse, the concrete and steel guys came over here and the plumbers, then they moved over there. Then the concrete guys come over here. We have this little bitty alleyway, 17 feet wide and 50 feet long. So utilities go in, we got to get inspections. Concrete comes in, we got to get inspections in court for concrete. Electricians come in and put in their conduit, we got to get inspections and wait for that to get covered and then they go out. Then the dirt guys come back and prep some more for, for the concrete guys and the concrete guys come back. So it's so many steps and it's such a tiny little thing. It's, it is moving slow, but it is moving. Elevators on its way, structural steel shop drawings, I received those on Friday. I reviewed them, the architect has reviewed, that's for the staircase in the back. All the structural steel for the elevator, for the fire exits, all that hand railing, that kind of stuff. So owners reviewed them, architect reviews them to make sure they meet design. Contractor has to review and make sure they meet dimensions. Then they send them for fabrication. But everything is moving along. If we can lock down the rest of our funding, it'll work, it'll help the project move faster because then we can have different groups of things going on. Right now we're working in just, like I said, a 15 by 50 foot area with all these trades and inspections that have to happen in sequence. And so it is a little bit slow, but it is moving forward and it's coming along well.
Other questions? Is the, the 3D electrical, is that?
The three-phase electrical, pretty much, Kit Carson has notified us they have the vault. We have a transformer. We'll be issuing a change rotor to our electrical contractor because we'll have longer conductors that go to the transformer. We're going to have to cut the asphalt for the power lines. We're going to, we're going to be putting in our secondary lines. But all the details have pretty much been worked out and now, now we're going to try and get it done before the tourist season comes up. And we're ready to go for our elevator when it shows up because we have to have the three-phase power in place for the elevator to be tested.
Construction, especially renovations are always, but we do have it till end of next year.
Yeah, and.
That we're projecting.
Yeah, and so like I said, I'm hoping we can get the rest of our funding all ironed out and in place. And that way we can work backwards from the funding that we have and have a functioning building. And also it'll help with the scheduling because like I said, instead of just having everything constrained in this one little area that's step, step, step. We can have people working in the east side of the courthouse. We can have stuff going on inside the courthouse. We're going to have stuff going on where the bathrooms go, demolition, all kinds of things. Right now, we're, like I said, we're just focusing out the alley, stairways and power. And so it makes it, it'd be quick if it were a big project, but because we're in that one little space, it's do a little bit of work, inspect. Next trade comes in, inspect, next trade comes in, inspect, come back. And so it's a lot of scheduling and when we have bad weather, like last week that it snowed and they cut the cotton, they closed the concrete plants for two days. Well, that blows everybody's schedule up down the line and so, but it is moving along well.
If there are no further questions, thank you, Richard.
Okay.
And we'll move to the general construction update.
General construction projects. We'll start from the north, Costilla Fire Department, we're going to be meeting with the architect. We're almost ready to put that out to bid. Right on the Colorado border, hopefully we get a bunch of, hopefully at least one or two locals will bid on the project. And local contractors. Red River, I think, might be ready to go out to bid midsummer. I'm hoping so. We're working on the design, same architect that's doing Costilla Fire Department. La Senegal, we're getting ready to fire that project back up, get a contract out to facility bill to continue with phase two of La Senegal. And that, that'll move us through September and finish the bulk of the building. There'll still be, like I said, phase three that we need a little bit more funding. Part of the issues again is nationwide, heating and cooling equipment is, is long lead times. That's one of the things, the next project is the Ag Center Classroom additions. We've been waiting on heating and cooling units. They're supposed to be arriving in the next week or so. Work's going to start back up with the classrooms at the Ag Center, so that's moving forward also. We have some grant money for Topol Community Center. I don't know exactly where the paperwork and the funding is for that, but there is funding for, to do windows or building improvements for Topol Community Center. Pinellasco Community Center, we have drawings, we've had our geotechnical report done. We're getting to the point where we're probably going out to contract within the month or so. If we can get our money, funds released. Detox Center on Wayesta, on Wymer Road. We've got preliminary drawings, again, funding and paperwork. Once that's all in place, then we can start doing actually the final designs and put it out to bid. That takes care of most of our projects. We do have some other little ditties here and there, but that's the bulk of our large projects. Any questions?
Commissioner Brush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Richard. As always, appreciate the update. Just, just wondering about the Pinellasco Community Center, since that's one that we're like from the scratch up. It's not, well, actually I guess because the firehouse is as well. I'm just wondering if there's like any kind of energy efficiency or resilient building techniques involved with that? Like any kind of sustainable?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Any, what are the, for new construction, are we taking into account like energy efficiency, sustainability, resilience?
So everything that we, we have to meet all the energy codes. And so we don't buy out of any of the energy codes. You can't, in the town of Taos, you can't buy out, and even in the state, you can't buy out exceptions. We don't buy out any exceptions for any of our buildings. We follow the Model Energy Code. We also, all our buildings are LED, all LED lit. If there's heavy electrical loads, we do three-phase. That's when three, that's when three-phase is best suited when there's heavy electrical loads. For light loads, like, light heating, like a community center, it's just lighting and some heating and cooling. It doesn't make sense to have three-phase power on it. But yeah, we, we work with all our architects to make sure we meet the energy code and look forward, program lights, you know, everything. So try and make it as efficient as possible.
Cool, thank, thank you. And I might have missed this, if so, I apologize. But did you mention the Oriohondo?
We've got a proposal, we're ready to go, put, go to contract. I think we're just finalizing the last little bit of the funding, something that Chris Majid, our deputy manager's working on. So as soon as I have, they say, this is, you got it, we are ready to go to contract and start.
And that last little bit of funding, I think that's what Taos County is contributing to the project since it was not exactly the project that was needed and the amount requested didn't exactly match, so we're contributing.
Correct. The grant was for a septic system. The building didn't need a septic system, it needed new bathrooms. And so we were short on that because they need to be ADA compliant, you have to do your asbestos and lead evaluations, removal, all the ancillary things that come with new, new construction on old buildings.
Neighborhood folks can't wait for those new bathrooms, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
It's not?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Hey, we'll move then to, to A, this is 14, 14A or 15A. This is discussion and consideration regarding potential litigation involving annexation of traditional historic community. These matters may be discussed in executive session under open meetings exemption, which allows for discussion of pending or threatened litigation. Oh, I'm sorry, I moved ahead. Move back to Commissioners' Reports and Matters. This is, this is a new business to be considered at a future commission meeting.
Mr. Chair, I would like for us to, in the near future, talk a little bit more about illegal dumping and what we can do on this side. I know also as we were cleaning the aseca, there was a lot of trash and it just seems like we don't have control. I don't know how we can control it, but I certainly, we need to look at our policies and there's lots of conversation that needs to happen around that. But I think we need to start that conversation so we can figure out what it is that we need to do to somehow manage that. So I'd like to see if in the future we can maybe have a work study in regards to illegal dumping and, and, you know, what does that mean? What, what's happening in our watersheds are aseces. That's all I've got for new business to be considered.
Okay. Eddie, anything else on new business? If not, then we'll move to Commissioners' announcements. Commissioner Brush?
Thank you, Chair Romero, I have an announcement. Last week as part of Women's History Month, Darlene Vial, Commissioner Vial and I were both down at Rancho Soto Elementary. I spoke with a fourth grade class and the last part of our conversation was I asked them what they wanted me to bring back to Taos County to think about, prioritize, try to fix, work on, and I'm just going to read, I'm just going to read what they said because I was writing furiously. Give it to the trash along the roadside. Give it to the empty beer bottles in our fields. Keep plastic out of our water. Cleaner water, we want cleaner waters. Stop the liquor bottles that are being thrown into our fields that our animals eat and then get sick and even die. Recycling. Stop wasting food. Stop cutting down trees. Stop hunting without a license. Recycle paper. Stop burning trash. Stop animal abuse and have places for our homeless people. So those are the things that our fourth graders want us to think about. I, I made sure that they knew that not all of it is stuff we have control over, but I also wanted them to know that their voices would be heard.
And Mr. Chair, if I could add to that, it was, I was with second graders, Ms. Christine Martinez's class. Amazing group of kiddos, asking amazing questions. And at the very end as well, I also asked what concerns I could bring back and. end as well, I also asked what concerns I could bring back, and recycling was a big thing, and, you know, just trash. So hence why in future meetings, we really should talk about it. So they were truly an amazing group.
Okay. Other announcements? If not, I have one. The hospital board is, is moving to fill or refill three positions on the hospital board, and so the nominating committee will be interviewing applicants, applications are, can be requested from the, at the hospital, from Lenora Sisteros, and then they need to be back to the hospital by April nineteenth. So the nominating committee will be interviewing and nominating three board members to the hospital board. Okay, are we now at executive session? Okay, I think we are. So entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brush.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vehill. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And so we'll be back up, back to wrap up after executive session. Thank you all for being here. Entertained a motion to come out of executive session, back into open session.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Romero to come out of executive session. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And now, if we could get an attorney's report out of executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the executive session, only those matters that were referenced in the motion to go into closed session were discussed. No final decisions were made in closed session.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vehill, and we are at the point of decision regarding potential litigation involving annexation of traditional historic communities, and, oh, I'm sorry, missed that point. Okay, we need to vote on the attorney's report, motion to accept attorney's report.
Move to approve Mr. Vehill's report.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Mascherini to accept the attorney's report. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Now, we're at the decision regarding potential litigation involving annexation of traditional historic communities. Commissioners, what is your?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like, yes, I would like to make a motion to direct county manager and the county attorney to inform the town, we disagree with its interpretation of the THC annexation statute, and the, and the county requests that the town stay any action on this matter until we are able to secure an opinion from the Attorney General regarding the interpretation of three dash seven dash one point one B.
I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a commission by, we have a motion by Commissioner Vehill, and a motion by, second by Commissioner Brush. Any further discussion, questions, anything needed to be added to the motion on the floor? If not, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We're at adjournment, unless there's something else. We'll hear motion to adjourn. The time is twelve twenty. Motion by Commissioner Romero to adjourn, second, second by Commissioner Mascherini, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. Thank you all, and we are adjourned.